Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands Commission for October 24, 2023. I'm Russ Drenzo, Chair of the Commission. We'll start with Rob.
Rob Horgan.
John Smolga.
Kathy Roz.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, we have a quorum. I'll seek Kathy for Sue. Sue did let me know she's not coming. Somebody else let me know. But anyway, we have a quorum. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting from September 26, 2023.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Start with old business. Lee Richards, 11 Holmes Road Pond dredging. Report on sidewalk. Eric Carlson is the, I think is the applicant. Rob and I went and looked. We don't really have a problem. We did have a question for the applicant. Is Eric here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Hi, Eric.
How's it going?
Are you gonna take the island out? There's an island there. Is that going?
No, the island's not going anywhere.
All right, so the island's gonna stay. The only comment Rob and I had is that there are birds nesting in those fragmities or cattails. You should do this anytime from now till April.
Okay.
Okay, that's just the birds are gonna take off and that's the time to do it.
I think, Russ, I think that someone should look that up because I think it might even be later in November to March. I'm not really sure.
Well, Eric, when are you planning to do this?
Well, I mean, you know, pond excavation isn't really the best time to do during the wettest time of year, you know? I mean, are there any exceptions on this that we can do after April? I know. Now, where exactly are the birds nesting? Are they in the island that's staying?
No, they weren't in the island. They were in like the cattails, the dead cat, you know, the on the edge. I didn't take a picture of it, but you can see him. You go out there, you see him nesting in there right now. Soon they'll be gone.
Okay, I know the homeowner said he's been there 30 years and never even noticed any birds there at all. But I mean, the whole point is to get, you know, dredge this out so then the cattails would be gone.
Right, but we have to consider wildlife. It's not really a choice.
Okay.
We did see nest in there. I know if you've been there 30 years, maybe you didn't look, but there's nest in there.
Okay, so I mean, so bottom line, it has to get done before April?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's just really not the best time of year to be digging it. That's my only concern, you know? But I mean, if that's what has to be done, then that's what has to be done.
Well, you never know with this crazy weather. We could have a drought in the winter. You know, you never know.
Okay.
So, our deadline- Really, if it's really wet in March, obviously you could come back to us and say, look, I can't do this right now. And we would have to allow it when it dried out.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to miss our window and have to wait another entire year, you know, if it's too wet to do before April.
I'm with you, but if the winter's dry, then that's the best time to do it.
No, you're right. You're right. I mean, early spring, if the winter's good, but you know, normally it's the wet time of year.
All right, any questions? Other questions, Eric?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, go ahead.
So, I'm looking at the drawing. I don't know if that's what's on the screen, but it looks like it's eight feet deep today. Is that correct? I was trying to understand.
No, it's eight foot max depth after we're dug. It's nowhere as near eight feet now. I mean, you can see the bottom right now. That's how silted in it is.
Okay, so you're trying to get to the eight foot depth max?
I mean, that, yeah, I mean, that's really a maximum depth. It can go up and down, you know, depending.
And so, is it the entire pond? You get it that the middle you'd want to be deeper, but the whole pond you're dredging?
For most part, yeah. There's an island on the backside of it that we would just clean out around. The island would stay, but it's the majority of the pond, yes. Yep.
And are the cattails by the island?
I believe there's some around the island, and then there's some towards the inlet where it's silted in over the years.
Okay, and all the material will, so it'll just be a big mound? Or help me with understanding how that material?
On the back, on the backside of the pond behind the island, there's a clearing there, and that's where we're gonna stockpile the material to de-water, and then once it's de-watered, we'll spread it out there and seat it down. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a mound. It would just be leveled out. There's a couple you know, low spots and this and that. We're just leveling out the field that's there, really.
Right, and so it's pretty flat there?
Yeah, pretty much. It goes up a little bit, but it's higher than the pond itself. But nothing's, we're not trucking anything out.
Okay, thanks.
You guys still hear me?
Yes, Ross.
Yes.
Okay, I think I fixed it. All right.
All right, well, we'll just, we'll have to get it done before that deadline. Now, do I come down to see you guys to get a permit?
No, we're gonna vote, Eric, and then once we vote, the permit will be ready at the land use office.
Okay.
You could get going when you want.
Yeah, I'll let you guys go.
So, I'll look for a motion?
I'll move to approve this as a maintenance activity. Continued upon it being performed in the window of mid-November to end of March 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Russ. Russ?
Yeah.
I apologize, but I had trouble with my sound when we were approving the minutes, and I had a question. Can we look at that at the end, maybe? The minutes from last meeting?
All right, what's next?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, right now, let me shrink this. So, we've got 30 Falls Road, Charlie Jackson, and I believe he's on.
I'm here. Can you see me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Rob and I looked at this. This is a non-regulated activity. It's over 300 feet from the river. I didn't have any issues with it. I think, Rob, you said we always require, what, an engineering something?
Typically, well, I don't recall an application where we haven't required an engineer plan.
All right, yesterday, Brian Neff came out and reviewed the plan with me, and he emailed in a letter today, you know, commenting on the plan, and he was satisfied that it was, you know, would have no effect on the river or any other wetlands. So, it is, it's my plan, but he's reviewed it and given it a green light, so to speak. So, I think I did that to try and satisfy your requirement. I see Brian's here.
Yeah, I did take a look at it the other day and just wrote up a short letter and some comments on there. It's a short letter. I can just read to you right now if you want.
And there it is.
There it is. Yeah.
All right.
Brian, I just have one question. There's no increase runoff from this to the neighbors or anyone?
No, he's got a concrete gallery system for dry well. Looks like there's, I know it's very good well-drained soil in that area, and there's no drainage going onto the road nor anything going onto a neighbor. Looks like it's a very compact site. So, I didn't see any problems with any excess, possibly any excess water going on other properties. It looked like it was a pretty safe location.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead. Make a motion.
I'll move to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, David Hyman is still on your agenda. I didn't know if you wanted to report on your sidewalk.
Yes, David here, by any chance?
He is not. He understood that it was approved.
Okay, Rob and I looked at it, and we didn't see a problem with him protecting the bank. You know, their backyards are getting washed away with every big storm. But Rob and I did look at possible solutions, maybe Brian, if you're involved with the long term. We think there needs to be a wall or a berm built to protect those backyards on just that side of the stream, which would cause most of the flooding to go on the other side of the stream, which there is no real structures or structures like houses. And there's a lot of room over there. Right now, the elevation of the side of where the house is out seems to be lower than the other side, and I think every time there's a storm, it's just it's just cutting that bank back further and further. So, although this was a quick fix, which is approved by the commission, the long-term fix, we think a berm should be considered, if there is a long-term fix.
I think that's a good suggestion, because you're right. A lot of that water wants to go on the house side of the property or the brook. And you're right, the other side's really not developed at all. That could take the water without any adverse impact, so that gets a good suggestion.
I know that, I think the agriculture or somebody from the USDA's has been up looking at all this stuff, and I don't know what they're gonna come up with, but we think that's a better idea than making the stream deeper or making it wider. It's a volume problem, obviously. That stream can't handle the volume, but we think it's better to protect those backyards and just let it flood the other side. Instead of making it all go straight ahead at either, at even faster velocities, because I worry about downstream properties if they dig that wider and deeper. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Next?
Okay, we're going to 24 Church Street, the Congregational Church.
Yeah, we looked at this because, you know, we had to look at it. We can't just approve a bridge. And, Rob, did you have any issues?
I did not, but having said that, with that berm idea, if that's on the table, you know, you know-
Well, it's a suggestion, so it's not on the table. Nobody's, nobody's coming before us to do it.
Okay, I'm just wondering if that bridge should be elevated a little bit to accommodate if there was a berm.
Well, one thing that I did, I measured the opening between the abutments on the existing bridge. Right now, it's 12 foot 8 inches between abutments. So, the new bridge design I'm working on actually widens that out to 16 feet, going to the little shed that's in the back. The abutment that's near the driveway right now is in good condition. But if you were out there, you saw the one on the other side on the kind of the shed side got washed out in the back.
Yep.
So, I'm looking at widening the space between the abutments out to 16 feet, which would push that abutment quite a ways. It'd be a lot wider in that area than it is right now. It seemed like it would make sense to leave that abutment in place, which isn't much of a barrier, but that could be left in place when we do the new abutment in the back, which would be stacked precast concrete blocks. You can actually put that in place while that old abutment's still there and then pull that out. But it would allow like an extra three feet of width on the opening for the bridge, just to allow flow to go through that. I know it's somewhat of an impediment, but if those abutments can be widened out spacing between them, that'll allow more water to go through the channel in that area.
But what about the height of the bridge itself?
Well, right now, the bridge kind of matches up with the driveway that's there. Previously, it was some old telephone poles that were spanning across there with a wood deck. The new design I've worked on has 10-inch, 10-inch by 10-inch steel wide flange beams, which are almost the same profile as what was there before, along with a wood deck. I looked at the idea of raising that up, but then we've got to raise up the driveway entrance that goes into that. So, now I was trying to keep it kind of at the same height as it is now, but widen out the space between the abutments to let more water go through that way in terms of instead of actually raising the bridge itself.
You couldn't use a step, Brian?
Well, it's actually, you know, a bridge you can drive pickup trucks over.
Yeah.
Because you have to pick up stuff in the church tables and stuff that's in that little shed in the back.
Yeah.
So, in the past, you just, you know, backed a pickup truck in there and loaded the tables up and took them out. So, you know, the step doesn't quite work with the vehicle access.
Yep.
It's also an access to let our neighbors use that to bring mowers in on the other side of the brook. So, they've done that for quite a few years, which we don't mind them using that to get across, to do mowing on the backside of the other side of the brook.
Any other questions? I'll look for a motion? A motion?
I'll move to approve this as a maintenance activity.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to Hemlock. We're going to 96 Hemlock for the Kers.
Geez, Rob, we forgot to hit that. Is the applicant here or Brian, are you here for them?
They are here.
I'm here. Oh, I guess they're there also.
Rob and I forgot to hit this. We did a bunch of sidewalks in this one. We didn't hit it, did we, Rob?
We did not.
Yeah.
Do you want to go take a look between now and the next meeting? I don't think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the owners are necessarily gonna start building tomorrow.
That would be great, and I apologize. There's a lot of sidewalks, so. Yeah, okay, we'll wait till the next meeting. I'll go look at it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next is-
Finishing writing. We're starting new business. We're going to 13 Mine Hill, Renee David, to put an accessory building on our property.
Okay. Doug, are you here?
I am here, Russ.
Hi, Doug.
So, you get to my site plan there. Okay, so what we got? So, we've got a little bit 13-acre parcel. Go back one, Julie, to the key map. So, this is the full parcel of the property. It's on the south side of Mine Hill, just behind the distillery. There's an existing residence on there right now where Renee David lives there. Can you slide it up a little bit so we can see the whole? There you go. So, her house is in the back behind the distillery. She has a, she would like to build an accessory building, residence for herself, a small two-bedroom structure for herself, and then let her daughter live in the main house. Wetlands were flagged by my temple and showing wetlands were only located in the back and behind her existing house, so you can see on this key map. Can you go to the next site plan there, Julie?
Sure.
Go up, just go to the next plan.
Hold on. Nope, I will. Have to clean some stuff up.
Okay, there we go. So, this is what we're proposing. We did soil testing out there for septic. We laid out a septic area, which has been submitted to the, the septic system has been submitted to the Health District. We're gonna propose a driveway off the existing paved driveway, which just comes off of Mine Hill. It's a small two-bedroom house, some grading, got some detention there for the roof leaders and part of the driveway. We are, we are have a little bit. There's the pond across the street there, and I should show the Upland Review area along the, that touches just a corner of the parcel property and a little bit of the driveway area. Everything else is outside the Upland Review area from that water course that's across the street there. Terms of soil erosion, we've got silk fence down gradient while cuts and fill areas. We show a stockpile area. We show any tracking pad for the driveway goes on to the existing driveway, and there will be some regrading involved in this as well, and some retaining walls behind the house to provide a little bit of level period behind the house. That's basically it, Russ. If there are any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So, the roof drainage, there's no go tos?
There is. It's being collected into a cultech system located from there from the carport.
Yep. I see. Any questions? Is this a regulated or non-regulated activity? I'm asking the commission. Should we go look at this? It doesn't look to me like-
I mean, there's like such a small little area of the driveway that's in that 100-foot Upland Review area.
Yeah, I don't think it has a potential to impact, is why I ask.
Doug, does that driveway pitch towards the existing driveway or away from it?
It pitches, it's totally leveled, but it pitches towards it.
So, what collects the water like right there, right at the entrance?
You've got, you've got a low spot on the existing driveway. There is a, there's a culvert, it's a kind of a channel, little kind of a swell area between on the south side of Mine Hill Road, going west on Mine Hill Road. There's also a culvert under the driveway. So, any water that goes off of that driveway will be sheet flowed down towards that culvert and will not impact Mine Hill Road at all, and then that will flow out towards the pond itself.
What I just suggest, we just take a look. I mean, you've got to go to Hemlock. It's not that far, right?
No. Sure, I'll sign up.
Yeah, I'm happy to-
But I know the property really well.
Oh, okay.
I don't, we were heavily involved when she built the first house with geotechnical, geothermal systems she put in, so I know the property really well. I really don't see a potential to impact that little wetland. But if you want me to go look and bring it next meeting, I'd be glad to.
I'm okay, Russ.
Okay. So, I'll look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to 20 Painter Hill Road. Stone Lutz Sand for a pump house. And I believe Paul is on the call.
I'm here. Good evening, guys.
Hey, Paul. So, what's this for, Paul?
This is a, so this property has over eight wells, I believe, on the property currently. They're all low yielding. So, this is a pump house to upgrade the controller systems associated with all of those wells, as well as have the ability to have storage. We're proposing five 10,000-gallon underground storage tanks to provide storage for utilization on the property. Some of these wells are yielding under half a gallon per minute, and as part of it, we're also proposing a generator adjacent to the pump house. It's proposed in the same vicinity of where the existing pump house is. It's expanding in size. It's approximately 20 by 40 feet in size. On the down gradient side, we have the roof runoff collected into a rain garden along with a berm that will act as a diversion berm during construction, where the rain garden will act as a sedimentation basin. So, this way, any activity up gradient of the berm and the sediment basin will be captured in that during construction and then post-construction that will be converted into a rain garden. We have two rows of silk fence on the down gradient side with wood chip berm between them. We'll stake out the proposed erosion control measures, the generator, the underground tanks, and the pump house for a sidewalk.
So, it's gonna store 50,000 gallons?
That's correct.
Why does it need that much water?
For irrigation as well as the home.
Okay. Did we approve the home, Paul? Refresh my memory. I don't, I don't-
There was a home approved, and then there's an existing cottage, which is shown on this plan.
All right, and we did approve the home, but it was a while ago, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody- I'm just curious, how deep are those wells that they've got on the property?
I will, I have some of the well yield reports, John, so I'll email those to Julie so you can have them. They're deep over, some of them are over 500 feet, if I recall.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry-
No water on that hill. It all runs off.
Yeah, on the Painter Hill Road.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Kathy. Sorry.
Sorry, Rob. I'm just not familiar with a residential home having 50,000 gallons of water stored. Is that kind of a regular thing when you build a house that you store 50,000 gallons of water?
Well, and you proposed the amount of plantings that we did as part of the driveway that were installed along with additional trees that are being planted on the property, yes.
Well, I mean, but people plant trees and we get rain. I'm just curious.
This year, we got rain. Last year, we did not.
So, you're saying that-
And this property has several trees that are over-
The water is for the plantings solely?
Yes, as well as some usage for domestic usage, because it goes through the pump house.
Are those tanks gonna fill up in a day, Paul?
Yes.
Well, you need a diversion permit from deep then, don't you? Over 50,000 gallons in one day?
These tanks are, these tanks are slightly under 10,000 gallons each, so they would be under that threshold.
Therefore, it comes before, just so the commission knows. Therefore, it becomes before the preview of the commission. So, it's the commission, it's what we call a locally approvable. It's up to the commission to approve it. If it was a little more water, deep would have to approve it. Because if you divert any amount of groundwater, surface water over 50,000 gallons a day, Because if you divert any amount of groundwater, surface water over fifty thousand gallons a day, it requires a diversion permit from deep. Just so the commission knows.
I'll have Alan Warner get you the tank specs.
Nine thousand gallons?
I, I'm gonna have Alan Warner submit the tank specs for you.
So, so help me understand. Um. You're storing fifty thousand gallons of water for use on this piece of property. If you didn't store this. This would be regular groundwater that would be. Dispersed throughout the, the area, right? I mean, it's just, it would just go in as right. Now you're storing it for use on this property. Am I, am I thinking about this right?
Well, it gets placed back on the property to then go back down into the groundwater.
Except the fifty thousand gallons that are stored there, right?
Each day it goes back down on the ground. You know, obviously there's, there's no irrigation occurring in the winter months. And you know, when there's rainfall like we've had this year, but last year. Um, in the summer months, certainly there would be usage, but it's, it's put right back down. Into the ground.
Paul, is this, uh, so this is out of the wells? This is replenished through the wells, not groundwater?
Correct. Correct, it's wells.
Is there any concern about adjoining property wells? If you're sucking that much water out every day?
There's the, there's no wells that are in proximity to these. I, I'll, I'll give you a map showing um, all the well locations.
So Paul, I'm, I'm just kinda curious here. So um. What did you guys plan here that it needs so much water? I mean, if you stick with native plants, it shouldn't be an issue, right?
Well, we have.
I, I forgot what the.
Dozens, dozens, there's dozens of trees on the property that are over twenty-four inches in diameter, which had. Significant heat stress last year when there was not an abundant rainfall like there was this year. And then when you combine it uh, with all the plantings that are. Currently installed as part of the driveway project and future plantings. Um, there's a two to three year time period during which they're establishing their root systems. In, in which they need to be properly watered.
Alright. Not sure about that, but okay.
Any other questions? Well, I think it'd be helpful just for the record to have a hydrologist look at this. I'm worried about, I, I'm pretty sure those, that bedrock aquifer is not connected to those streams.
Mm-hmm.
But it is a lot of water. It is a couple thousand gallons less than what deep would allow. With a diversion permit. And obviously, if you had to get a diversion permit from deep. You would have to do a lot more work. Than what's been done for, for this approval. So I just like. A, just so I feel comfortable, a, a hydrologist. I, I, I think. You know, there needs to be some explanation as to what, what the drawdown is and. And how that affects the aquifer as a whole. Uh, the hydrologists don't know all that stuff.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. We'll see you next meeting then.
Okay, guys. Have a great day. Enjoy the uh, perhaps a whole week of no rain.
Should we, could we walk this in the meantime?
Yeah, I'm staking it all out, so.
Okay. So Russ, rather than just say we'll see you next meeting, should we walk it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll contact you, Paul, you'll walk with us?
Yes, please, yep.
Okay.
So, so I just had a question, so. I, I'm just using round numbers, right? So, I don't know. So, this is. Five percent less than the amount of water that would require a, a deep um. A, a involvement from deep. So. Uh, what would deep require? But you know. It's not, it's not very far off from this threshold. So I'm just wondering, what, what would they require?
That's a good question Kathy. One way to find out is you look at the application and the application's like seventeen pages long. There's a whole bunch of information that needs to be provided.
Okay, so you can just go on the deep website and figure out what they've asked for. Okay, thanks.
Right, and the hydrologist that. You know, I'm sure Paul's gonna get a good hydrologist. They're, they're gonna have to look at that application. And explain to the commission, you know, how, how this complies with it. You know, just because, just because it's just less, doesn't. All that means is if it went a little over, deep would have total jurisdiction and we wouldn't have any. But because it's under, we have total jurisdiction. So we could ask for anything. We want and if. You want Kathy, if you want that application to be evaluated by the hydrologist. And then information provided, the same information. I think that's reasonable. Right?
Yeah, okay, thank you, Russ. That's helpful.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
Okay.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Alright, next. Okay, we are going to. Uh, one fifty-seven South Street. Where the accessory building.
I'll, I'll step down for this.
Where is this?
The, the, uh, I'm, I'm representing the applicant.
Oh, okay.
So I'm stepping down.
Step down, but then. I still have a quorum, okay.
So this is one fifty-seven South Street. The old Squire property. And there's been a um. Permit, uh, an application was approved. Previously. For a five bedroom house. At the top of the driveway. Um. You know, the septic and the driveway was a previous application. So now the owner wants to put a. Two bedroom house where the five bedroom house was. And to put a one bedroom accessory dwelling down the driveway a little bit. Both having, you know, but, both going to a septic area. That you can see on the lower part of the map. Um, same septic area, just that it's designed into two separate systems. You can see a little space between the leaching fields. Because that's what the health department um, requires. The new studio um, dwelling, proposed dwelling is a hundred and ninety-one feet from the um, intermittent stream.
Okay.
So the.
Rob, this is just in case he can't make it all the way up to his house in the wintertime?
Well, actually, it's, it's a mother and daughter, so the, the um, similar to Renee David's application, so the. Daughter will live in the upper house and the um, mother will live in the lower house.
Yeah, okay.
And where's the lower house?
It's right, I, I don't, it's a.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see. And what's the size of that?
This, the lower, the studio, the proposed one bedroom residence is uh, sixteen by twenty-four, small. You know, to two, two level. The upper, the upper house has been reduced in size. So the overall footprint of the, the approved upper house was fifteen hundred square feet. The total um, footprint of both houses combined now is uh. Just over thirteen hundred feet.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you said the, the smaller house was sixteen hundred feet. Did, did I get that wrong?
Uh, it was sixteen by twenty-four.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so that's uh, three hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Jeez, my shed's bigger than that. And two goats living in it, so. Uh, anybody have any questions? I don't see, you know, wetland anywhere. I know the, there's a huge vernal pool up on top, but. And that's right off to the other side.
Sorry, Russ.
Yep.
Is it just the intermittent stream? Is that it?
Well, there's an, the intermittent stream, um. You know, that, that you can see the dotted line on the left-hand side, but up top. If you scroll down a little bit, Julie. There's a vernal pool. That's two hundred and fifty-three feet. From the house.
Hmm.
But this house sites, this upper house site has been previously approved with a bigger footprint in this location.
Hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with this.
I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this as a um, non-regulated activity.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, you've got a W E O report. John Cody.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Julie, can you pull up the uh, report? There we go. Now, as you see, it slowed down a little bit. Not that much really going on these days. Buildings slow down, everything. Um, those are the non-regulated permits that we granted, some sheds, just nothing really. Worth mentioning. Um, it's been rather quiet. So we've been cleaning the office quite a bit. Julie's been doing quite a bit of it also with us. Filing down there is looking really good. Guys should come by and take a look. Um, I really don't have much to say besides that.
Okay. That's good, John.
Yeah, but Russ, stick your head down there. It's, it's looking good. Looking real good.
Okay. I'll be down. Okay, next.
Okay, now your chairman's report, unless you wanna circle back to the minutes.
Okay, we'll circle back to the minutes. Go ahead Kathy.
Oh, um, just let me pull them up on my site, so we're not there. So I just had a question. Oh, sorry. Scroll up, scroll up. Uh. Oh. Getting there, uh, here we go. Okay, so. This was on, um. Shoot. Nine minutes ago. Uh. Um. Yeah, so. Let, uh. Sorry, I had it highlighted, but now it's not. So this was on the um. The Stone Ledge, did we talk about? Oh, no, it was on twenty-four Church Street. There, there, there we go. Where's twenty-four Church Street? There's something about um. Stone Ledge Sam had put in some additional drainage. Do you have it up on yours? Um. And I think that's not worded correctly. Let me just flip back to yours. Where's Zoom? Okay. Yeah. Do you have the, the um. Something about uh. Oh, here. Uh, yeah, Russ made a comment about um, additional drainage. Do you see that part? That good? I thought it was on Church Street. Is it under the Hyman one? Uh, yeah, maybe. Uh, something about, uh, Russ reported that a storm cell developer. Hmm, something about Russ. I'm so sorry. Russ reported that a storm cell, where else? Uh. Something about Russ making a comment about Stone Ledge Sam? Or Painter Hill? See that? I know the Painter Hill property was referred because. Russ reported residents were concerned water came from there. Yeah, it's that comment. I don't think it's, Russ reported that a storm cell, no, which was seventy-five storm event. You see Russ's comment? Why I can't find it. It was highlighted. Um. Actually, or is it under his chairman report? Church Street flash flood? Go to the last page. Reported that the driveway did not add to the flooding. Russ Terenzis stated that he was unaware. Were, were you unaware or were you aware?
No, I was unaware additional drainage had been installed.
Oh, okay.
I see that. I was unaware. I was made aware uh, later on and then. So I might have said exactly what that, I was unaware about the additional drainage that was installed. But it was installed and it's working very well.
Okay. So. So then you reported that there were concerns that the driveway on Painter Hill added. To the flooding, but you. Determined that the driveway did not add to the flooding. So was there something that? You were able to? Was there an assessment report on the water that you could report that it didn't add to the flooding? I'm just. I'm just, I, I must have missed this, that. I, I'm not sure how we assessed that there was no.
But there's no way that driveway had anything to do with this flooding. There was a four inch storm. There's no way to know. There's, but there's no way.
Exactly, agree. There's no way to know.
There's no way to know and, and even so, that's such a small area compared to the whole watershed of that stream. There's no way. That driveway had anything to do with the flooding.
Okay.
But we did go out and looked just to make sure and we found that they added a lot of new drainage. That we had not been aware of. That we did recommend that they add. And apparently they did it and didn't report back that, hey, we. We told you we weren't gonna do this, but then. We went ahead and did it anyway. So, I think the minutes are fine.
Thanks.
Yep. Um, chairman's report, uh. Rob and I went to look at Minor Bridge Road, which is pretty. The culvert replacement. I'd say it's about halfway done. We had some concern about. The erosion control. Because there's no upgrading or erosion control, so. I called Mr. Cody and Mr. Cody sent me the plans. And there were no. Erosion control in the upstream portion in the plant, so. Everything they were doing was according to plan. Um, since they were gonna be diverting the water from a. A temporary huge pipe into the new culvert. Um. It wasn't worth making them put erosion control after the fact, so. But otherwise. Everything looked really good there. Pretty amazing project.
So Russ, they were converting that from the temporary pipe to the box culvert like the next day when we were there.
Right.
So that's why, you know, we didn't determine that it was necessary because it's happening the next, next day. Did it happen? Do you know?
I don't know.
I heard that the pipe that they put in got flushed downstream.
Well, that happened during the flood, but they brought it back and.
Yeah.
And uh, they, they fixed things. It did, it did slow them up. They did lose a week. And the rain hasn't been easy. But it is an amazing thing that they built. It's really a bridge. That now they're gonna put twenty feet of fill over. It's pretty amazing, so.
But Russ, I think.
Great structure.
I, I think that if they have not converted that, if they haven't removed that temporary pipe. That there should be. I mean, we, we kinda determined that they were gonna do it, but if they haven't done that for some reason, like. Construction got delayed, I think there should be upstream erosion control.
Well, I mean, it's not in the plans, Rob, and.
Yeah, but that, I don't think that matters. I think that's what, you know, you know, that should be brought to the attention of the engineers that designed this. That they're probably.
John, are you still on? He's here.
John? Yes, I am.
Would you let the engineers know that if they haven't changed the flow, you know, to the. Culvert that they need to put up upstream erosion control in?
Yeah, I'll swing by there on my way in in the morning and reach out to him right after.
Alright, if it's already diverted, it doesn't matter anymore, so. Anything else? On the West Cock Report of Wetland Commission, Tom, I need to type up uh. The different changes that they want and then we could discuss them. If anybody wants to discuss one of them now, that's fine. I think. The one thing that bothers me the most is they're recommending forty hour training. I think they've forgotten. They, now we know why firemen are hard to. Get because they made the training so difficult. They're gonna do that to Wetland Commissioners now.
Well, there was a whole bunch of recommendations, right, Russ? So, I mean, they're already typed up. They're, they're there. Well, there was a whole bunch of recommendations, right, Russ? So, I mean, they're already typed up. They're they're there. They're part of the report. Were were you thinking?
Yeah, but 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 it's, it needs to be summarized. They, it's too, it's too long to really um, get to the crux of it.
The the recommendations are too long?
Yeah, they need to, they 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 need to be bulleted, really. If you wanna take that out, be fine, but
Sure.
Bullet it what what the recommendations are and then we could discuss each one.
Yeah, okay. I'll do that. And then there was the other report, right?
For example, training recommends forty hour as opposed to the voluntary eight hour, which is voluntary right now. You don't even need to get it. I I think a good answer is require that you get it within a year, but not the forty hour army engineer training is, they're crazy. And I think they forget that every, every bigger town has a town engineer. And every smaller town hires engineers as needed. So I don't know why the commission needs to be a bunch of experts, which is another recommendation. That a soil scientist be on every commission. What does a soil scientist do? They flag wetlands. That's about the only expertise they have. And if they have a biology degree, then yes, they could talk about the bugs and the bees, but so yeah, let's bullet it and we could discuss one or two a week. There's no rush. Who's really pushing this?
Yeah, I mean, their their recommendations, they're all coming from different towns across, or well, I guess in the western region of Connecticut, but
Southwest, it's it's all Fairfield County. So Rob and I were talking about it and like a buildable square doesn't really fit Roxbury. It, we can't do a buildable square. Here, the rocks and the wetlands keep you from doing a buildable square. It's
Well, I I thought it had some really, the other report had some interesting points and I'm certainly not an expert, but I just thought maybe, you know, it it, the suggestion was um, that there be a, you know, that that it be shared with zoning anyhow and that they, you know, have a point of view perhaps and that one, I just thought it was a really interesting um, perspective.
Well, I did send it to Kim Tester.
Okay.
So Kim has it and they they could do what they they feel, but I I don't think a buildable square works in Roxbury because the land's too rough. And you know, down there, they're talking about it because they allow eight thousand square foot mansions to be within twenty five feet of a river. And that's why this whole thing's coming up. It it's if you have a lot of money, you could basically do whatever you want. Commissions kinda cave to it.
Okay, so I I can reach out to Kim then and if she's got it. She's on plant, is she on planning?
She's on zoning.
zoning, okay. Perfect.
And she's a selectman, so, you know, I shared it with her because I know she's very good about reading things in detail and then coming up with with good ideas about what what, if it works for the town or it doesn't.
Okay, thanks, Russ. Excellent.
Yeah.
So yeah, I mean, the point on the recommendations is that, you know, I think Bridgewater is in West Cog too, so some some towns.
Well, that's how I got it because I'm Wetland Enforcement Officer there.
Okay, and and they.
Otherwise, we would have never gotten it. It only went to the member towns.
Okay.
So I don't even know if we comment, they're gonna say, oh, shut up.
Well, I guess.
Own business.
I was thinking that that, you know, their their recommendations are, you know, their recommendations, but maybe there's some one off on some of them that would be helpful for us, that's all, you know, not you're, to to your point, some of them may be overkill, but there may be some modified version that's um, useful for this committee, so.
No, I agree and I, that's why I wanted to just do a a very point bulleted, so the commission gets to see it in one little sheet and then we could discuss each issue and we could discuss what they recommend. You know, like training, forty hour o- uh, Army Corps. You know, that's what they're recommending.
Yeah, and we could do some.
The commissions, they're recommending get rid of commissions, go to a all professional permitting like the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, and that that.
I don't know if that'll fly because
Yeah.
Can handle the permits it's responsible for now.
But I think that they also recommended, you know, maybe just two full-time people for the state that might be available for for consultation if you had a, you know, unique or um, or um, you know, a question, something really one off that came forward, could you consult with one? That's that's what I, that's what I got out of the deep full-time people, that they weren't taking over this, but that you could consult with them.
Yeah, I don't see that happening.
Yeah, okay, fair point, John, fair point.
I mean, when when they had more people there and I was on the uh, the Brookfield Commission, that they still didn't have enough time.
Hmm. Okay. Well, yes, this is good dialogue. I I I just thought it was, this is helpful dialogue to kinda go through, maybe the thing that
Yes.
Part of it.
Yeah, it's absolutely worth discussing.
We don't have to stop it, you know. I've been, you know, when you take a week off and you come back to work, it's all hell breaks loose, so I'm not gonna have time. Maybe by the next meeting I could just rip something up. I also wanted to report, uh, you know, Karen Eddie's husband, Alan died of cancer. And um, and Julie was kind enough to send uh, and the address if anybody wants to send her uh, your condolences.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to hear that, yeah.
Yeah.
Very sad.
And unfortunately, I think we scared Mark, um, Mark Zenny, is that his name?
Zebra.
Yeah, he resigned from the commission today. He told me it took too much time.
Oh, my gosh. Are you serious?
Fortunate because I think he would have been great.
Yeah.
On the commission, but he unfortunately felt that with the sidewalks and all, everything you need to learn. What what I'm trying to stress to people is, commissions were designed to have just community members, not experts on it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you don't have to be on this commission being expert. But you you know, people who live in the community, like you, Kathy, you you have, you come up with really great ideas or great questions and you're not an expert and that's, that's what it works.
I'm not an expert at all and but that's my, that's my point. Like I just think, you know, any way I can get better would be good. I mean, to me, the 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 report was, okay, it's been fifty years since the inception of of wetlands across the state. How have we done? That, to me, that was so, it was reflective, you know.
Well, with Mark, I I think with Mark, it was, geez, this is, this is a lot of work and I'm like try being a chairman. What are you kidding me? Sidewalks? I did them all. I don't know. I don't know. But I I, it was, it was sad news because I thought he would have been good. So just so you know, there there's an opening. You know, if somebody wants to join and they don't need to be an expert.
Well, there's another pop-up pub on Friday, Russ, so we can go recruiting.
Oh, cool. There is?
Yeah.
Oh, great. How come nobody tells me? I guess they don't want me to come anymore.
You gotta read the town newsletter.
You know, I cause too much trouble when I go.
Is that how Mark um, joined the last time you guys recruited him?
I did. I said, uh, I think you'd be great on the commission and he said, well, but I'm a Democrat. I said, that has nothing to do with it.
Should we stop recording? Do we have, I guess we still have to.
Wetlands doesn't care.
Yeah.
So, alright. Nothing else, right, Julie?
Nothing else. You can adjourn whenever you're ready.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.